Commissioner.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Mayor Neely.
Here. Notice she doesn't call the one that's not here. Now Nancy I always calls the one that's not here, too.
I'm on top of it.
Good. Anyway. Future agenda items. Do I hear any? We do have, in terms of a work session, we do have one coming up for parking, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, any other study sessions, any, uh, agendas for study sessions, anyone wants to bring forward? We'll go ahead and go into our discussion items, beginning with our Oregon City's Emergency Operations Plan as prepared by Ecology/Environment, Inc. And got Mike Conrad. And we also have two other speakers, it looks like.
This is actually going to be presented by Lieutenant Lisa Nunes.
Very good.
May I present some CDs for you?
Yes.
I made copies of our Emergency Operations Plan for all of you. We're trying to keep it as less paperless.
Yeah, I'll make sure that it gets there.
So, we have, I don't know if you guys remember the days when we had books and books and books and books in the EOP. But we're not doing that anymore. The first time I introduce Greg Garcia. He's a new emergency manager for Clackamas Fire.
Brand-new.
How long?
I think less than ten days, so yeah. Very good.
Greg, go ahead and tell them a little bit about what your-
Absolutely.
You can go ahead and sit down if you want.
Well, thank you very much. I, uh, I'm fresh off a three-and-a-half-year active-duty tour with the Army. I was assigned to the state's Civil Support Team, which is a weapons of mass destruction, terrorism response force. And so I did that for the last three-and-a-half years. And fortunately, we fell into a position that's working out really well for me and the family, and we're enjoying it. But from day one, I have forty-eight emails on my first day on the job, so it's busy, but that's good.
Truly enjoying the people and the community, and we've moved here to Clackamas, and so we're enjoying it.
Good. So I'll go ahead and present the Emergency Operations Plan. The staff recommends that the City Commission approve the City of Oregon City Emergency Operations Plan. It's prepared by Ecology and Environment, Inc. This is the first times since I've been involved in emergency management we had a company actually do a plan. In 2008, the Homeland Security Task Force submitted an application through the Homeland Security for a grant that would pay for a professional company to write an emergency operations plan for Clackamas County and surrounding cities. Let me put Nancy's glasses on real quick. At that time, if you all remember Kevin Donigan from Clackamas Fire, he worked with all the cities on emergency operations centers and plans, and he felt it would be a great idea, a great opportunity for the local cities and counties to have overhaul of all our Emergency Operations Plan. Donigan worked with each of the cities, and emergency manager, and Ecology/Environment to develop a plan that would be consistent throughout Clackamas County, but specific to the city it was written for. The goal of the emergency managers in Clackamas County is to train and work together for emergencies, and in the event of an actual disaster, the members would work as a team. The Emergency Operations Plan was near completion when Donigan passed away from a long struggle with cancer. But his idea for the emergency, or the EOP, I'll call it the EOP, that an emergency operations team member could go anywhere and open up the Emergency Operations Plan, and it would be similar to what they already knew. Ours was completed in December. I know county just had those presented to their county council on March 8th. And Ecology/Environment, I think they've completed a couple, but they're still working on for Milwaukee, Happy Valley, Sandy, Damascus, Lake Oswego, Westland, Canby, Wilsonville, and of course, Oregon City. The EOP revision was an opportunity to reach out regionally and incorporate one basic plan that Emergency Operations Center team members could understand and follow no matter what county they were in. The Emergency Operations Plan attempts to be all-inclusive in combining four phases of emergency management, which are mitigation, activities that eliminate or reduce the probability of disaster; preparedness, activities that governments, organizations, and individuals develop to save lives and minimize damage; response, activities that prevent loss of life and lives and property and provide emergency assistance; and recovery, short- and long-term activities that turn all systems to normal or improved standards. Do you have any questions on the plan?
Every jurisdiction has its own plan.
Correct. Specific to their city.
Okay. And how, I mean, what areas do they end up differing? I presume there are things of commonality between them.
They're mostly all common to what they do. Like, the counties would be more expanded because they're a bigger jurisdiction. Gladstone would be smaller because they're a smaller jurisdiction. But basically, the company goes on a standard form that they use. And we have our basic plan, and then we have other things included that help us with our environment in Oregon City, which, you know, landslide's the big one. And then, of course, we have Willamette, Clackamas, and we have trains going through our town. So those are what is specific for our plan. The basic plan itself, and you'll see on your CDs, is probably the same for every city other than Oregon City's put in there rather than Milwaukee. But all the addendums are specific for us.
I see that this is, that it lists people here that are going to receive hard copies.
Well, I think we're gonna, they didn't get, they gave me five.
Okay.
So I think what I will do is, and you guys can print off if you want, but there's like hundreds of pages.
Yeah, it just makes more sense to leave in separate places.
City Hall has one, commissioners have one, the EOC that we have is, which is right over here at the fire station, has one, and the police have one, and then everybody maybe has a CD somewhere, so they can plug it in.
I have another question, because I worked on this in Portland with Metro and Multnomah County. And I know when we were dealing with Portland, Portland said they didn't have the money to deal with it, so they were leaving it up to Multnomah County. Do you know anything about that?
No, I don't.
Okay. It just seems like a big city to kind of just drop out of the program.
Yeah. But you know, the grants these days are all focused on not things anymore, but projects. And this was a great opportunity to take a project, which this is a big project, and present that for a grant. And we were lucky enough to get grant money to have the company write this, which is a lot easier than us trying to write our own.
So as part of your program you have, I assume trailers and tents and decontamination facilities and all of that stuff?
No. What do we-
Does the hospital have those things?
Fire has more.
Within the different agencies, they'll bring different things to bear to the battle. So there are local resources, and there are state resources as well.
Does the hospital have those kind of resources?
The hospital, as a part of its charter, has to have a process for like decontaminating patients. Now, their process might be to call the fire department. So they have a plan in place.
Okay.
And so, and it'll be up to us to work closely with them and understand what their process is and what their expectations are of us and things of that nature.
Okay.
And we have, as a city, have signed a agreement, mutual agreement with the county, who reaches out all over for things that we may need. If we had a major emergency, then we could call county, and county could call the state, who would get us some of the things that we need that we don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, so the commissioners all have copies on their CDs and can review the plans. I'm just wondering for the benefit of the public if you could maybe spend a couple of minutes and just run down the list of, because invariably every time we have an election or we have a new commissioner appointed, I'm asked at some point, what's my role in the event of an emergency? And even from some of our more experienced commissioners, I get that question sometimes. So if you could just kind of run down the list of who's supposed to go where and what they're supposed to do.
Actually, and when you get a paper plan on this, you'll know exactly what page to go to, because it tells you exactly what you do. And it is 3.2.1.1, and it tells what the mayor and the city commission's responsibilities are. And would you like me to read that to you?
Summarize it, maybe.
Oh, Nancy, you want to ask a question?
Give us a page or a section?
It's Section 3.2.1.1. The ultimate responsibility for, the mayor and city commission have the ultimate responsibility for policy, budget, and political direction for the city government, and it's borne with the city council. During emergencies, this responsibility includes encouraging positive support with citizens' involvement and citizens' assistance, ensuring policy statements as needed to support action and activities of recovery and response efforts. Basically, what your job is, is number one, establishing an emergency management authority in city ordinance, which we have one. So we have, Clackamas has a city emergency manager, and we have one. And adopting an emergency operations plan and other emergency management-related resolutions. Ensuring adequate program staffing and funding. And then, in the event that we have to declare a state of emergency, that is up to the mayor and the city commission. And they help, you know, call them, emergency manager would call them and say, hey, we're in trouble, we need to do this, and you would do that. And acting as a liaison to the community during activation of the EOC. And acting on emergency funding needs and attending public informational briefing, so you know what's going on.
Can I ask a question about that? I took the Clackamas County training to declare a disaster. Has everybody done that? Because some of the other, like Johnson City had everybody on the commission there.
Right.
Not everyone's done that.
Those are really good opportunities. The county puts those on a couple of times a year. And each time they do, I've tried to send out an email and say, hey, can you guys attend?
That was excellent. They took us through the whole thing.
Yeah, they tell you exactly how to do it. And our book has a declaration in it, and it's very easy to follow, and that you guys could fill out if we needed that to happen.
Great.
That's your responsibility.
I've got a, I've got a question that I don't know if that's related, but I know the state legislature failed to prohibit students from bringing guns to schools, and it was then up to the local jurisdictions. I imagine emergency could be some kid bringing a gun into school and, you know, threatening or actually acting violently.
We did, what year was it that we did the active shooter where we actually activated the EOC? Do you remember what year that was?
That's about five years ago we did that.
Five years ago.
But that type of situation wouldn't fall under the emergency management plan. That's a different type of emergency that we respond to. This basically has to deal with mostly natural disasters or man-made disasters. It could be a big oil spill or a gas leak or things like that. And it could be in a large area or a confined area. But typically, it wouldn't be a so-called tactical situation that the police would respond to.
Preparing for a tactical situation touches that. My role is to work with the school districts and the community college in making sure and reviewing their documents and making sure that they're comfortable and providing them with the resources, so that they feel comfortable to deal with things like an active shooter or bomb threat or things of that nature.
Let me ask you, you know, we've had laws prohibiting children from bringing guns to schools in our-
Yes, there are laws prohibiting firearms in school.
Okay. Because apparently the state legislature hasn't adopted them statewide.
You know, I'm not sure of that, but-
When I had, that was announced, they didn't pass some legislation.
I think, I'm making a guess here, but I would imagine that's something to do with some of the more rural school districts and things like that, where kids hunt and fish and things like that. But I think there are, most of the school districts in the more populated area have at least administrative rules that prohibit that type of conduct.
Any questions at this point?
So I think what Lieutenant Nunes is asking is that for the commission to, at their leisure, review the proposed Emergency Operations Plan, and at some time, and hopefully in the near future, she can come back and get an approval from the commission to adopt the plan.
Right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
I think we were very wise to get a company to help you with it.
All right, yes.
Help write those things, and they're not fun.
Very difficult.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda is the, the noise ordinance, staff referring, and we have Nancy Bush, and she's brought to us at several noise ordinances. And you might, you might mention if there have been also specific things that have triggered this coming to us at this point.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm really just here providing some information. We had a couple of complaints that prompted this discussion, and I want to talk a little bit about those two specific complaints that were made. And one, one was music from a neighboring property. This is in a residential area where one property owner can hear the music of another's. In the summertime, windows open, the music was inside the other person's home. It is not, something that we could never verify was occurring, something that couldn't be heard from the street. We continued to receive complaints on it, and I did ask that police respond should the complainant call in and specifically ask for a police response to the property, and the noise issue was never verified. It was occurring after 5:00 PM. It was during what we would consider normal noise hours as well. And actually, we did end up resolving it, we think. We'll know next summer if it occurs again, because the windows are shut now. So we sent a notice to the property owner in this instance, who was not the resident, where the noise was coming from. As we do with a lot of our complaints that we can't verify, we'll send out a courtesy letter stating that we received a complaint, this is the nature of the complaint, and generally things correct themselves, because people want to, I believe, be good neighbors. The landlord was concerned, did bring it up with the resident, and so far, it has corrected itself. But it has been winter and wet, and I think it snowed today, so I'm sure the windows are shut. And then the second specific, specific complaint was regarding yard equipment that was being used at an unreasonable hour. I believe it was three or four in the morning or something along that nature. They were convinced it was a blower that was being used, and obviously, we're not here to address those. And this particular one is in a large subdivision, probably surrounded by several other subdivisions. I brought, actually brought kind of a map to show you if anyone's interested in kind of the area where that was occurring or no. Anyway, I have it for you in case you'd like that. Generally, if we have something along that nature, we're not only going to have one complaint. It may be a fluke, I'm not sure. It could be a kid's car that's unmuffled, leaving to go to work or something along that nature. But certainly, if you called that into 911 non-emergency, maybe the chief can comment to that better than me. I'm not sure they're going to go hunt down through all those cul-de-sacs and neighborhoods to figure out where that's coming from, especially at that time when they may have limited resources as well. We did talk to the property owner, and he said that the next time that it occurred, that he would indeed go out and figure out where it was coming from. And then we could send that courtesy notice that would save us from sending it to probably, there's probably a couple hundred homes in this area, which leads me to believe that maybe this was a one-time occurrence. I did pull some other noise ordinances from cities. City of Milwaukee, City of Happy Valley, and City of Canby. And I specifically quoted the ordinances that would address, or I would assume would address those particular issues. Some cities have very strict rules, and they would allow you to probably do very little on your own personal property when you start talking about not hearing noise from the neighboring property. That could be anything from kids playing, which we have received as complaints before. Basketball's bouncing, excuse me. Kids playing basketball in the driveway, skateboarding, landscapers, air conditioning units, I mean, you name it, we get it pretty much. And right now, the current noise ordinance has really served us pretty well, leaves a lot of discretion for us, because it is so vague, and it kind of leaves it to the responsible, responsible, but maybe the reasonable person, which may not always be the person making the complaint at the time. Generally, people make complaints when they've absolutely had it, and they may not be that entirely reasonable. A lot of noise issues come from neighbor disputes. A lot of them are. And we do refer them to dispute resolution, which is free for neighbors, especially in high-density areas. I mean, it's something that everyone recognizes. It's hard for people to live that close together. And that's where a lot of neighbor disputes come from. Actually, the number-one complaint in neighbor dispute in the entire city, and we're not talking about downtown, I'm sure you've all heard me say it before, but it's parking. Parking is the number-one complaint downtown Oregon City, and the number-one complaint by the residents of the city, parking complaints. Should you decide to or wish to move forward with researching the noise ordinance further and maybe drafting something specific for Oregon City, we do have a, we would have a couple of suggestions. Certainly, these two complaints are, one, as I said, would already, we would be able to address through our current ordinance of being unreasonable at that time in the morning. The other, I think, was more of a neighbor dispute, so I'm not sure we'd ever be able to resolve those types of issues. But we get far more complaints on chickens, dogs, goats, the noise and the odors that have come associated with having those types of animals on small tax lots. So that's always something to consider. And-
Let me stop you there for a minute.
Okay.
In terms of, in terms of animal noises, are those non-conforming uses, Tony? Animal noises, are animals non-conforming uses? That is, somebody's got, do we have any ordinances dealing with animals? Like goats?
No.
Like livestock?
Well, technically, it says one hoofed animal per 20,000 square feet, and I think that is in association to a stable as well. And I only know that because I've received that complaint a few times. But yes, you can have up to one. The code is very old, and people today, they want to have their goats, and I understand it. However, they can make a lot of noise, they can become a nuisance. People may not always be considering where they're putting that chicken coop. Is it on the, it's out of their way, but it's underneath their neighbor's window, and they're hearing it clucking or maybe aren't cleaning up after it. I mean, let's face it, not everyone is the ideal pet owner, and that includes chickens as well. I've learned a few things in this job, and that's, I can't make people be good neighbors, good pet owners, or good parents, which are the three things I'm asked to do daily, so.
I presume you have some general nuisance ordinances, and animals could, I guess, possibly fall into them. But if they're not specific, how do you deal with them?
Well, we deal with them by addressing the issues, which is the noise associated with it. And generally, we can prove the noise. And if it is unreasonable, and sometimes the unreasonable, the reasonable person determining if it's unreasonable, it's going to be the enforcement officer. We'll get those calls, should I wait till you're done?
No. I blocked it off.
I'll tell my papers up there to help you.
It shouldn't go further. Here we come. Thank you.
We get a lot of calls, and often it'll be, why is the code enforcement officer parked outside my house? And we can look it up and say, well, he's not, he may be parked outside your house. Is his window down? And they'll say, yeah, I think his window is down. And then we tell them, well, he's listening, he's doing paperwork. He's doing paperwork on the side of the road, and he's listening to what's going on in the neighborhood, so we can get an idea if we're not provoking the noise from the animal, is the animal truly making noise on a, you know, on an ongoing basis to making the animal a nuisance, or the animal owner a nuisance.
Years ago in Portland, somewhere between 1978 and 1982, my drummer's son was-
We talked about drummers before.
Yeah. And, I mean, Portland had a, had a noise code enforcement officer, I mean, dealing with that specifically. And they actually went by decimal units at the boundary of the houses and so forth, and got my son to correct the noise and eventually shoot out the neighbor for complaining. But, I mean, do we have anything that that's, that's that specific in our ordinance or proposed releases?
I have it written here. Excuse me a moment.
I saw something about 1,000 feet.
Yeah. The, for a decimal reading, in it, when I started looking into this a little bit, I sent out an email to the Oregon Code Enforcement Association, so that covers all code enforcement officials within the state of Oregon. And I got a lot of feedback as it related to the decimal readings. And the consensus being that the use of the meter was generally problematic, that the citizen expectations were unreasonable and time-consuming for the employee. A few expectations encountered were citizens wanting delivery trucks prevented from making delivery and measuring those sounds, citizens complaining about businesses or residential air conditioning units, neighbors letting their diesel engines idle while warming up, children playing, basketball's bouncing, et cetera. In addition to taking the decimal reading, one had to consider wind, rain, concrete walls, or anything which sound can bounce off, distance from objects when taking a reading, and the height and angle of the sound meter while taking readings, all of which can affect the accuracy of the reading, which an attorney can easily create doubt for anyone without the proper training and-
It's kind of a headache to really, really apply any ordinances that are that specific.
Yeah. So, you know, certainly, we could apply some kind of a decimal reading to just about anything, but it wouldn't pick up some of those noises that are really the ones that we're here talking about. Our existing noise ordinance has been very successful. Is it unreasonable? Yes, yard equipment at three in the morning is unreasonable. We get it. We don't need a new ordinance for that. And is the neighbor's music unreasonable? We haven't been able to determine that it was. Is measuring the noise, if you can't hear it from the street, which is less than 100 feet away, I'm guessing that a decimal reading is not going to find it as unreasonable as well.
Yeah.
So.
There's no time, time associated with our current ordinance?
There isn't, and I was asking the chief about that, because I hadn't always heard, you know, there's no noise after 10:00 and/or before 7:00 AM. And really, that's just a courtesy. It's not written in stone anywhere. And so I went to the chief and said, hey, I've always heard that, you know, you guys would respond.
Yeah, I always thought so, too. And in fact, have had the police tell me so. But, I mean, I was thinking about it. We've always, but I think it's directly with, excuse me, the park hours. I mean, I think we use that as a typical timeframe, and, because the only experience I had was with the festival.
Yeah.
And having, you know, music stop at a certain time on weeknights, or music stop at a certain time on the weekends. And I was always given kind of very specific times, but I guess it probably was just associated with the park hours rather than really a noise ordinance, which I always thought it was, but-
Yeah, I don't think it was specific to a noise ordinance, although Scott Archer might have a different take on the hours of the park and then the use of the park. And certainly, we want to be good neighbors. The city is the one issuing the permit for that, so we would want to be held to the higher standard, not disrupting the peace and quiet of people staying at the hotel. The sound of the park carries, it's on the river, you know? It can be probably pretty disruptive, and I'm sure the city is just trying to protect everyone on both sides of the river.
And then you have instances like, I don't know, there was, I was staying at the hotel this last weekend, but the film production going on too, so they were going all night long too, but I don't think there was any, I don't know if there's sound related to that. But, so there are things that definitely fit multiple categories.
Those two instances with the filming in the park-
Yeah.
And yours take a special permit unrelated to-
Yeah, right.
unrelated to noise, where special restrictions are, are put on those entities, um, that are renting the park. So that is kind of separate from the single-family residential, um, noise, and what people expect is reasonable peace and quiet in their neighborhood is totally different from what is addressed through commercial and industrial zones. The most, most of your noise complaints are addressed through different ordinances. They're not even addressed through our vague noise ordinance. Usually, it's an illegal occupation and illegal use of some kind of single-family residential. Then when we look into it, once you let them know that they need a, a home occupation permit to, one, conduct the business there, but yet you still can't make any noise if you have one, um, it generally goes away. People realize that you can't have a tile-and-stone grinding operation at your home, even if you didn't write on your business license that that's what you were doing, you just said you were doing paperwork. Well, when your neighbors complain, and they shouldn't have to, they shouldn't have to, people shouldn't, um, shouldn't have to complain against that, so of course, we're always thankful that we respond to anonymous complaints.
So your presentation tonight was, is primarily just to kind of, um, update us and, and, um, well, there was obviously, there's been some complaints that ask the question, where are we? But you're not necessarily advocating for a change in what we currently have, it doesn't sound like.
I don't think we need to jump to anything, and we wouldn't be able to fix one of those issues anyway. I mean, our, a common noise residential complaint is, say, for example, barking dogs. We get a lot of barking dog complaints, believe that, barking dogs, and we get a lot of chicken and rooster complaints, but we don't have a brochure for chickens and roosters. It's a little harder to...
I jokingly said peacocks, but people have peacocks in Oregon City? I used to live in a, a house where that, I would hear it all night long.
Absolutely. And probably about 10 years ago...
Or sea lions, what about?
Oh, no. Well, the person in control of the animal is the one who is ultimately responsible, so I'm not sure who that would fall on.
Oregon Department of...
We send out some specific letters, I brought a couple of sample letters, and, and this is the dog barking informational brochure, I brought enough for each of you if you, if you were interested in it. When we receive a complaint regarding a barking dog, the first thing we do is send out a, uh, a letter to them that lets them know that we received a, a complaint regarding the barking dog, and to please correct it if indeed, you know, they think that it is theirs, and we enclose "How to Handle Your Barking Dog." And, um, it gives some, most people don't know that their dog is driving the neighborhood crazy, they put it outside so it won't tear up their house while they're at work generally. And it's lonely, and it barks all day until they come home. I mean, it makes sense, it's, most of our kids do, the minute that we walk in, they want our attention, they've been out driving everybody else crazy until we get there. So...
They've been at school.
There you go. Um, and so we send that out, and generally, the problem corrects itself, and it goes away, and we just kind of open it and close it as we send out the information. And then if we continue to, to receive complaints, then we'll address it in something a little bit more formal. And the same with, um, we have a, a good example of a dentist office, um, up here on Warner Millie. Um, we addressed it a couple of years ago, and they installed some new equipment, there was a lot of grinding going on, and it was unreasonable.
Was it the patient complaining?
No, it was the, the neighboring residential property. And, um, it had a high-pitched squeal, and you could, it was vented out that direction, so simply bringing somebody in, their maintenance person, to, to muffle the sound, and then redirect the way that it was vented corrected the problem. Well, a couple of years later, we just sent out a notice on it February 17th, again, because we said that the noise had occurred, and the guy was a little upset at first, but he called his maintenance guy, and then called us back and said, what do you know? It's, you know, this piece shook loose after this couple of years, and now I know that I need to routinely go out there and, and maintain that. So, just a quick little letter that asks them for their voluntary complaints prompts that conversation, and we're able to solve a lot of these issues, um, that way.
Do people have to live on the property where they have animals?
I'm sorry?
Do people have to live on the property where they have animals?
Where they have the animals? I probably have to look that one up. I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, in R-10 zone, a farm's not right permitted use, it doesn't say anything about it necessarily living there.
So, but what if it's not R-10? What if you're R-6, or R-7, or whoever those?
I believe it's, I believe we, without going into look, I think we did, our farms are allowed in R-10 only. I don't think they're allowed in R-8 and R-6 unless they were there previous, because there's a minimum lot size requirement on the farm use.
Oh, it was 20,000 square feet?
Try and find it real quick.
I hope I'm right, Tony.
Yeah, R-10 farms, commercial, or truck gardening, and horticulture nurseries on a lot not less than 20,000 square feet in area are permitted use in R-10.
So, did anybody have any other questions, or did you want to revisit this again? Or I'd be happy to do any more, any research?
I think Commissioner Smith was right, we're basically asking the staff, is, do you want us to go back and do anything to amend our current noise ordinance? Or is it okay with the commission to leave it as it is and keep it enforceable the way we have it? That's basically what Nancy...
If it's working for you, I would say.
I mean, I guess if we were getting continuous complaints in a certain area, we'd want to look at it, but I, you're the one getting the complaints, probably.
Yeah, and we really, these two are something that, um, you know, we have resolved, one through, um, making contact with the property owner, and also doing the referring to the dispute resolution, but when people don't want to take up the dispute resolution, it generally leads us to believe that it truly is a dispute between the neighbors, because most people do, I believe, want to be good neighbors, and the other is already addressed in our noise ordinance. It's unreasonable to perform that kind of work at 3:00 in the morning.
Mayor, if I could, if I might, um, you know, all noise ordinances and all of the regulatory rubric which different cities use, um, they're all based on a reasonableness standard. The only question is whether you want to measure that reasonableness with a device, like a, one of these meters, and have additional training and staff costs for implementing that, or whether you just, you either measure it with a meter, or you measure it with common sense. And right now, our field staff measure this with common sense, and neighbors tend to do the same thing. Going to a noise, noise meter system, uh, it does increase the cost of enforcement, but it does give us a little bit more teeth sometimes when we, when our people respond to the scene. So it's, if it's not broken, you know, you may want to ask, we've had, I think, two of these complaints in the past year that I can remember, where it might have been to our advantage, if we had a noise meter, it would have been easier to prove the case. But by and large, the majority of these cases get resolved with our current ordinance and our current deployment of resources. You, you might get a little stricter enforcement if you had the training and the, the meters, but at the end of the day, it's all about reasonableness anyhow.
And people have different sensitivities, uh, at the old, at the old building where City Hall is, where, you know, where Police Department was located, we had a couple of meetings where one of our commissioners picked up this high-pitched noise that really affected him, I couldn't even hear the noise. So, I think people have different sensitivities to noise.
I think the other thing to consider too is a lot of these noise complaints that we would be unable to verify is something that's probably happening after hours, which is going to fall on an additional duties for your police staff to chase those down, because realistically, if it's not happening before 4:30, our staff is usually coming in to finish up their paperwork before they come home for the day.
So any more questions? Hearing them, we'll go off onto our last item.
Would you each like a doggie brochure?
Oh, yes.
No, thank you.
No.
No? I do. I'll see what it says.
And Commissioners, you've probably all seen the trail news, but I, Nancy, while you're here, I wanted to commend you guys for putting this frequently asked questions for code enforcement on this page, because, I mean, I also like that you've been very direct in some of the, some of the answers that you've put in here. You've, are chickens allowed? Yes, and then you provide an explanation. Can I be rude to my neighbor? Yes, but that's not in there. But, um, you know, there's yes and no questions, and then there's references, so I would encourage you to keep, keep doing that whenever you think it's appropriate. And I know always in the spring, right before the tall grass and weeds start to grow, that's another time when you want to remind people what their civic responsibilities are.
We absolutely try and update that trail news, um, for what our hot topics are about that time, and we purposely put that in about the chickens, because we get so many calls about the chicken complaints. And of course, um, everybody knows that the big four from May is a reminder, plug for code enforcement, the big four are our four main complaints, and the fourth one rises to number one, May through September, and that's overgrown vegetation. It literally doubles our caseload during, during that time. So, something important to remember, the first is parking, residential parking, solid waste, inoperable vehicles on private property, and overgrown vegetation. Overgrown vegetation moves to number one, May through September. Maybe not this May, if it keeps snowing, though.
How long?
Yeah, I'm like looking at this, going, it's all like summer and spring, and I'm like, what is that?
Thank you, David, for that reminder.
I have one more question.
Yes.
It kind of goes with this, I'm kind of got this little private campaign to get places to tie up dogs downtown, because if you're downtown with your dogs walking, there's no place to go into businesses. Would that violate some kind of a code?
Well, technically, um, the, the code currently states that the dog should be on a leash or under the owner's control. For city-owned property, um, city parks, it's on a leash at all times, and that's because everybody should be able to feel safe, I'm not, everyone has the same comfort level with, um, dogs, especially other people's dogs. It doesn't specifically state that they would have to have them tied up, but that's something that could be easy and...
Well, I've been researching these little things that you can affix to different buildings, and, you know, there, the dog clips onto the thing, and they just stay right next to the building, so, but I don't know if that would be a violation of some kind?
Well, I don't think it'd be a violation of some kind, provided your dog, or whomever's dog, is not out there tied up trying to attack people.
No.
Um, again, it comes down to being reasonable. I mean, people do take their dogs with them all the time. It's no different than any, um, business down there. I mean, if you have a business that has a lot of people that bike to the area, they might put an extra bike rack out.
Right.
If you have a business that welcomes, um, animals inside, they may have something like that. I mean, I think you have the Lucky Labrador bar that allows dogs, it promotes animals inside.
Right.
Um, so it's kind of up to each individual businessperson. Some businessowners may say, I don't want to clean up after somebody else's dog, because not everyone, um, is a good pet owner. I hate to say that, but given the number of complaints that we get, I can tell you that not everyone is a good pet owner. So, um, it's, it may be up to some of the individual preferences. I checked with Lloyd and see what he thinks about.
Okay.
Um, something along that line, and if he could, um, sell that reasonably easy to some of those businesses down there, do they want those dogs tied up in front?
There's lots of dogs down there on the weekend, people walking, but you can't go into any place because you can't.
There's no place to tie them up? Well, you might be able to use some of those fancy new bike racks that N C K has put in.
That's what you do in Portland, they tie them up to those bike racks.
Yeah, to that, or the meter, because obviously, the meters are free during that time, where there are meters still, um, down there. I, I don't think that anyone would frown on that.
Puppy post.
Puppy post, that's right. Little fire hydrants every 10 feet.
Thank you, Nancy.
Doxen height. I think, I think if you were talking about tying dogs up to meters, I don't know if that's what you're talking about or not, but... Well, no. I mean, somebody, somebody getting out of a car at a meter may have some problems, the dog be right there.
You can train that thing to push those buttons.
Yeah.
I want to see that.
You know, like I said, everybody's comfort level with animals is, is different. Everyone does not have the same comfort level. Um, we all know somebody who's probably definitely afraid of dogs, whether they're the nicest dog in the world or not. But it is a public space, it is a public street, it's not like the park where we want to secure, um, people's safety, and where we have a, a little more responsibility. It's, it's a public right-of-way, and people have to, um, use their just best judgment when taking their dogs out.
The only thing out here is you don't have any, well, maybe you do on the back.
Oh, yeah.
Fred, Fred doesn't have a real dog, he's got a cartoon of Paul Maranian, neither of which are real dogs. Anyway, we're going after our last item, uh, suggestion out of, I presume, is it out of the Historic Review Board for the, oh, no, Natural Resource Committee, for designation of, uh, heritage trees out of the Waterboard Park Public Works facility?
So I'd like to give, uh, at the, uh, February 7th, 2012, City Commission meeting, there was a request to give an update on the application for the heritage tree nomination for all of Waterboard Park, and all of the trees that meet the qualifications on the, what is essentially the upper side of the Public Works facility. Uh, I'd like to make a brief presentation reviewing the, the update, walk through the heritage tree ordinance, uh, since this will be the first time that the City Commission starts to see these requests, and then, um, a brief update on the application itself. Uh, so as stated in the commission report, um, our intention is to take this to the Natural Resource Committee at their monthly meeting, which is, the next one is April 11th, uh, to have them review it and provide some feedback, and then, um, depending on how, what that feedback is, if they need more time, or if they are able to review it in one night, uh, bring that forward, uh, as we can to the next City Commission meeting, that we can get it onto the agenda and incorporate their, their comments. Uh, with that would come a staff report, uh, the Natural Resource Committee, probably additional staff comments from those affected, mainly parks and public works, um, and then, and then a recommendation for the City Commission to consider. On the dais tonight, I placed two, um, two items of information, and I'll start with the first one, which is the Heritage Trees in Grove, section of the municipal code, it's section 1208040. And we identified, uh, trees that we, that we would qualify for the heritage tree designation or a grove designation, and as you can see, we've got such things as Oregon White Oak, Doug Fir, Red Cedar, Ponorosa Pine, and then there's a, a size, a minimum size requirement that's associated with that. And so that was the intent, was to identify larger, older specimen trees and designate them either individually on, on public property through, through this approval process, or if a private property owner came in. And actually, what you'll be seeing, uh, before you see this application, we've had two requests on private property, uh, that, that will be before you, uh, in the very near future, uh, for this heritage tree designation, which will be the first two, which we've designated in the city. Uh, moving on through, um, it's a little bit unclear, so we are erring on the side of being conservative in that, if it's in the public right-of-way or on public property, um, the recommendation needs to be consented to by the city. In hindsight, we should, probably should have been a little bit more clear as to who at the city is the consenter, uh, whether that's myself or the City Commission. Um, in the, in the case of this application for this site, we're going to bring it up, and it'll be a two-step process. One is, does the city consent to this application? I'll leave that up to you as the City Commission, and we can clarify this language at a later time, whether that's myself, the city manager, or if it's the City Commission who makes that consent to even apply. And then the second question will be, what do you want to do with the application in terms of designation? On the back of this, of this sheet, you get to the, the criteria, there are four criteria identified for designating either a heritage tree or heritage grove. The tree or grove is a landmark importance to the city due to age, size, species, horticultural quality, or historic importance, or it's listed as a state heritage tree, as designated by the State Division of Forest Resources, or it's a rare species or provides a habitat for rare species of plants, animals, or birds, and the, the tree is not a relatively damaged disease hazardous or unsafe, or the applicant is willing to have the tree treated by an arborist, and the treatment will alleviate the damaged disease or hazard. So those are very broad criteria that, that we work under when we're going to be reviewing these designation requests. The application itself, we're really looking at it as, as two, two applications. One is for, and I'll start with Waterboard Park. Um, the, on the material that was provided you, I included my commission report as well as the, the application, and you have the application in its entirety. And the request is, and I'll just go ahead and read it, because of the historical significance of this area, all trees of eligible species and of eligible size within Waterboard Park and the adjacent lots that the city owns, namely tax lots 200, 300, and 500, should be protected as a grove. And 200, 300, and 500, as I stated, are the, uh, the upper side of the public works, uh, current public works facility. So concerning Waterboard Park, a little bit of history there is that, you know, I'm sure you're well aware, under, um, under our charter, Waterboard Park is designated a, as a natural park. Um, I think the, the, the difficulty is that there's no actual trees or area identified for protection. We do not have a inventory of trees, type, size, health. And then another thing, another... And then, another thing, another interpretation that the City Commission's going to make is, what is a grove? Per the definition from the dictionary, grove is a group of trees either planted to produce fruit or nuts, or a group of trees naturally growing without much growing underneath. And we've been starting to pull some pictures to give you an idea, so we're going to need a little bit, we'll provide some recommendations, but really, it's up to you to determine what a grove is, to what extent it is, if it's all of Waterboard Park, and how you want to handle that. You do have the protection, as I stated, that it is designated as a natural park in your charter, which does provide some, well, significant protection. And I think, as we begin to work through these, the one concern is, with a request like this, you know, does it start to diminish the intent of what the heritage tree ordinance was intending to do, when you start to just designate large swaths of public property without identifying what the actual heritage tree or significant trees within that area are? And then, you probably also want to consider the quality of that natural area. I'm sure you're all aware of what the existing condition of Waterboard Park and the understory is. I wouldn't call that a natural in its original form. There's quite a bit of invasives in there, and there's quite a mixture of tree species. And so, that'll be something that we need to work through in terms of how you want to address this. You know, you potentially, you know, you potentially have a situation where we could receive an application that says, "I want to nominate all trees within the city on public property that meet the criteria of this." And it puts us in a difficult spot, because that was never the intent. You know, when we envisioned this, it was more of, we've got a tree, you know, or a grove that stands out, it's significant, and you take those applications where you can actually identify a tree or a group of trees and be able to actually put a boundary around them and have some type of a marker to that. So, concerning Waterboard Park, that's kind of where we're at on that one. Concerning the Public Works, the upper side of Public Works, once again, we have a request that all trees on those tax lots that meet the criteria be designated. We also have a previous land use decision, which was approved, which allowed tree removal. Fortunately, on the Public Works site, we have an inventory of the whole site by tree type, location, and size. We do not have the health of the trees across the whole site. As you may recall, there was a proposal to remove the oaks around the basalt rock in the middle of the site, most of you, and we can bring Commissioner Polly up to speed when we make these presentations. And so, for a number of the oaks that were to be removed, we have an arborist report, which goes into much more detail concerning the health of those trees. So, in that situation, we have some more data to work off of in making a recommendation.
Can I ask you a question, Tony?
Yeah.
I read the arborist report this afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
You know, unemployed, so I have a lot of time to read arborist report.
Exciting.
So, and I, on your paper here that you left for us, it says that the white oak, the diameter eligibility size is eight inches.
Correct.
And I think the arborist report says six inches.
Well, we have two standards. We have one for mitigation, so in our site plan and design review, we, why would it say, I guess I have to go back and look at what it said it's six inches?
It was a table like this.
Okay.
Actually, there were two of them in there.
Okay.
And I believe it said six inches. I may be wrong, but I thought it said six inches.
I guess I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and look to see exactly what it was referring to, because we usually don't use a six-inch. Per our site plan and design review, we require mitigation for all trees that are over six inches in diameter. So, that's what may be what they were referring to. At breast height, four and a half feet roughly, if they're more than six and a half inches, they count towards replacement if they're removed. So, if you're a four-inch tree, you don't have to replace it, we don't have a mitigation standard. That's probably what they're referring to, but I can go back and check out.
Okay, thanks.
So, with the work that Ms. Crushar and her group did, we have a lot more information on some of those trees to be able to work off of. And the second piece of information that I put at the dais was the actual removal and mitigation plan that was part of the Public Works master plan. And what you see in kind of, in the burnt orange are the oaks to be removed, and then the oaks to remain are identified in green. You know, there was quite a bit more that went into in terms of mitigation planting on the site or in other appropriate sites throughout the city. But, you know, we're going to try and utilize this information when we make a recommendation to you, because I think it's, you know, we've, like I said, we've got an approved land use that's already authorized some of these to be removed. We have a Public Works facility that, for the unknown future, needs to be able to operate at this facility. And then, we have a tree plan that's identified trees that work with the master plan and land use approval that are going to be saved. So, is there a way to maybe work off of some of those trees that we know we're going to save and start to identify some of those? So, that's kind of the direction that we're taking, just because we do not have enough information, nor was it ever the intent that we would hire an arborist to go out and inventory sites and describe the health of every tree on a tax lot of this size, nor Waterboard Park. You know, the commission can certainly have that discussion and provide some guides for us, but, so at this point, this is the track that we're going down in trying to review this larger request here, and provide you with some recommendation on how to proceed with this.
Mayor Neely and commissioners, I also, I would respectfully like to request that decisions on those trees be held off until we are moved, because we have no idea what, right now, we're going in one direction. We were, I won't even mention again that we were going in a different direction for quite a few years, now we're going in a different direction. There's a very good chance that we'll be successful in going in the direction we're going right now. But if for some reason, something is to happen that we can't move, or we can't move for five years, or whatever the case might be, it would, I think, from a department standpoint, it's only my responsibility that I request that you wait off, wait until a permanent location is moved to by Public Works for those trees on that site.
We're not, we're not going to get into discussion decision-making, because for one thing, we're looking for a recommendation from the Natural Resource Committee, right? And then we'll, that'll be built in.
But I wanted you to know that, right off the bat.
That'll be, that'll be built into the discussion at the time it would come to us. Right now, we're essentially being told, this request is being put forward to the Natural Resource Committee.
Correct.
I think, I think it's an argument that you should be placing there, and that may, you know, that may influence their decision-making as well.
And perhaps even, especially when you're looking at the entire site. I also think that the city might want to do some sort of planning for that site before they, just a suggestion, we're not really certain what might end up on that site, if anything, so, just a thought.
So...
So, I'd encourage you to be at the Natural Resource Committee or at one of your designated when this topic comes up, so that debate actually can occur with that particular committee.
And I guess I would just, while I appreciate that, and we will certainly bring that forward, I'm not expecting my Natural Resource Committee to make a policy decision about the uses. I want them more to focus on the trees. I really don't want to put them in a position that we've seen with where the Public Works facility is going to go, how long it's going to be there.
No, no, I understand that. But the point is, this is going to be vetted by one of our advisory committees before it comes to us.
Correct.
So, I think those kinds of discussions need to occur there first.
Yeah, and I plan to attend, I mean, it's a matter of looking after the department.
Bill, any questions on this, among us, we have Bill Daniels that wants to address this. Come on, come forward, Daniel.
Mayor Neely, Commissioner Polly, welcome. Mr. Smith, Ms. Ross.
My name's Bill Daniels, I belong in the McLaughlin neighborhood, and I was the applicant who signed for this request, and representing the Neighborhood Association through the Natural Resource Committee, and perhaps through City Commission, to find out where we stand on this request, we realized that this is the first time that a request had been made for a grove of trees, and deciphering what that means is part of the process. We haven't heard back from planning since I initiated this request back in November. It's been four months that I haven't heard a thing, nor that I know of formally. Now, maybe there was some discussion made that I was not aware of, but I did hear about this being discussed today at the workshop, so I thought it'd be appropriate that I'm here, especially if you had any questions on what intent was or what we're trying to accomplish. And I do know that there's a lot of other native trees there besides the white oak, and we have the vine maples, and we have the Pacific madrones, and the western red cedar, and black cottonwood, and the big leaf maple. Those are all native trees. Some of them may not be the caliper that belongs in a heritage nomination, but as a grove, they're all significant, in our opinion. It was made as a motion and passed unanimously at our neighborhood meeting that we bring this application forward. I haven't heard anybody that dissented on it or had any other reason not to. We want to try to preserve that area. It is, I don't know the exact boundaries of Waterboard Park, but it certainly is adjacent to it in many areas. We know there's a big understory of native plant material there as well, the Oregon grape, the thimbleberry, the caskera, the snowberry, licorice ferns, and of course, there's wildlife habitat that goes along with that, those species. And we also understand there's an understory of non-native species, the English laurel, the blackberry, Himalayan blackberry, the Scotch broom, flotilla, climbing clematis, the English ivy, English holly. I think there's a big effort afoot to have volunteers to go and start clearing out the non-natives. We all realize that it's a significant area. There's potential perhaps that it has the same kind of similarities as Kamasi has in its hydrology and its geology and its plant material across the Wayan West Lynn, if any of you have been to that area that is owned by the Nature Conservancy. So, I'd hate to see this area obliterated, and I think that that was one of the reasons that we wanted to go ahead and try to run through a process through the heritage program to see if it does qualify as a grove. And if you have any other questions, I'd be willing to entertain that. I planned on being at the, the Natural Resource Committee had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and I was going to, since I hadn't heard back from planning on this, I was going to make a public comment on the three minutes that's indicated at the beginning of the agenda to try to bring this forward so we can have a discussion on it.
When is it on the agenda for Natural Resources?
When?
When?
We're shooting for April 11th.
I have a question, Bill. I don't know if you got that handbook on the Gary Oak, the Canadian handbook about the, well, I was reading that this afternoon too. Got any questions about trees, let me know.
So, it's the Garyana you're talking about?
Yeah.
The white oak?
Right, and it talked about a specific, that they are species specific to several different species that lived only in those areas. Is that something that you've looked into also?
No, I haven't. I know that oak groves, white oak groves are becoming less and less in this state, in fact, in the Northwest because of cultivation and development, and certainly, that's one of the reasons that we were behind this, as a neighborhood, was behind this idea of trying to preserve this area here, to preserve not only the white oak, of course, but all the other native species in the understory.
I think also because the Native Americans used it fired and actually created an environment that was more conducive to white oak. We actually have in the general, I don't tri-county area, we actually have native ponderosa pine, and they probably came in because of the fire control period that was done in, throughout actually, Gualea Valley. And with those things gone, other species have been moving in. But I think they are important communities. It's one of the major reasons that Metro bought property in Kanima was because of the white oak.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do we have any reports coming?
Mayor, I want to make sure before we move off of this, off of this topic, whether or not the director's gotten sufficient direction from the commission regarding any ordinance changes for this designation? Do you feel like you have that? Do you?
We haven't had much in the way of heritage tree, I mean, heritage tree is a fairly new word, and I would, I would like this to play through the advisory committee that we have for this, and have the discussions about the points that I understand from Public Works come out in that particular venue. It's one of the reasons we have these advisory committees, actually. And rarely do they come and give us advice. They usually go to the staff and give advice to staff, but they are advisory committees, so I'd like that process to continue.
So, more likely than not, then after that occurs, we'll come back to you in a work session and report what we've learned from that, and also see if there's any further direction you want to offer us before we recommend something for your agenda. Good enough?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I guess we're ready for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by giving some of my time this evening to Nancy Crushar to talk to you about Bike Oregon. So, Nancy.
I attended the final meeting for the Bicycle Tourism Studios that was held and sponsored by Clackamas County, the TDC Tourism Development Council, and Oregon State Tourism Group, whatever they're called. They deserve to, their name to be remembered, let me tell you. They did a fabulous job for us in Clackamas County. I believe we're the first group in the state that's going through this kind of a process. It was very informative, and I think it's going to help a lot. The counties and the Tourism Council is very, very interested in promoting bicycle tourism, and I think we've got great opportunities here. So, I'm going to pass out a couple of little take-homes that they sent with me, a couple stickers, nothing like stickers, and a card. So, we'll be probably continuing to talk about it in the future, and for now, the studio is completed, and I'm hoping that there's some momentum that carries, because there's some great ideas and some great opportunities for Oregon City in this program. But I'll try to continue to participate. We're fortunate to have Daphne West very interested in this program, and she was there today as well, and she's doing a great job for you guys there. She's also on the Tourism Council as a board member, so she's kind of wearing two hats for this effort. But just thought I'd give you a quick update, and I will keep you updated as if anything else happens.
Why don't they have any pictures of Harley's?
Wrong bike. But it's amazing, the impact, the economic impact. They were quoting to us some of the economic value that this type of tourism can bring to an area, and it's significant. Really, it's very interesting. If I can get my hands on the PowerPoint, I'll try to send it out to y'all.
Thank you, Nancy. I also want to let the commission know that, or remind you, that Oregon City's part of a consortium with Clackamas County, the state, and Metro, looking at future redevelopment opportunities for the Blue Heron site. And while the trustee is working at one pace, Oregon City and through Eric Underwood is working at another pace, trying to make sure that when there is some dissolution with the trustee, that we aren't starting from zero as far as economic development. So, tomorrow, I think, is our first roundtable for economic development to try to get private sector interest in the site. to try to get private sector interest in the site for redevelopment purposes. So Eric, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we're hosting our first, our inaugural Blue Heron Developer Roundtable session tomorrow. It's going to be at 11 o'clock. We're going to be at the front gates. We're going to be at the front gate at the Blue Heron site. We're going to take a short tour. We're going to go all the way out to the falls just so the developers can get a good feel for the site and a good view of the falls. And then walk them back through downtown so they can get the vibe of downtown and familiarize themselves with the Bain Street area. We'll have the presentation at the verdict. I'll give a brief PowerPoint presentation, just some overview of the site, some site specifics, some constraints, some opportunities that we see. And then start a dialogue with the developers to try to extract some information, expertise from them, as to the way that they might see this developing or what type of partnerships might work in developing this property, or what kind of tools that they're going to need to make this site work. So, and at the same time, we're hoping that generates some interest among the private sector to start talking about this site as well. And if this tour is successful tomorrow, then we will hold another one on the 21st.
Could I ask, who's the invitation out to for participating?
Well, we have some members of the consortium that'll be represented there. And we're targeting specific developers throughout the Northwest region.
Including people who have put in bids or expressed interest in putting in bids?
No.
Okay.
No.
Would it be?
These are well-known.
You want to look for that train, don't you? Daphne wants to find that train that's underneath there.
Is it open for us within?
We have room for 30. We're planning for 30. I think we have about 27 or 28. We haven't received a lot of confirmation from the developer side, so there may be some room. So, yeah, you can come. Yeah, if there are more than 30 and there's no food.
Sounds like you're going to have two.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, if you could be there.
And you're the beauty, you've got that factor.
Absolutely. They're just going to want to come back.
You have, me have a bar and grill where I grill lamprey and sea lions and so forth, can be off.
So continuing my reports, I've been doing my coffee and questions meetings with our employees by department. I started that when I first came to Oregon City. So this is my second year of doing that, about halfway through the departments, hearing all kinds of interesting things about the tools that the staff need and the things that are working well and aren't working well. And it's a good time to be doing that because we're preparing the budget. And so it's nice to know before we actually start finalizing those numbers if there's something you missed in the process. A tool or a piece of equipment that the staff needs. So I've got, I think, police and Public Works and a couple left, a couple of bigger departments left to do that with. But should have it finished up here in the next month or so. Also, I've been asked to assist the Clackamas Fire District with the selection process for their deputy chief on March 21st. So I'll be going to do that with them. And working on completing the budget, I also want to give kudos to Scott Archer and Denise Coy in particular, as well as all of our department heads for Trail News. I keep seeing this thing, and Nancy got a great shot here on the back, and the mayor's got an article in the front about the jug handle. And if there was ever such a thing as a self-inflicted negative traffic experience, there's going to be a bunch of them coming. Because everyone in the world must know by now about the jug handle and the closure on 2/13.
Does that mean we won't get any complaints?
No, I think we're still going to get those.
Unfortunately, today, the Oregon City news had a bunch of wrong information about the closure in their article. So that was too bad.
We're a week away, they have time for retractions.
Yes.
Yeah.
They'll do it in the next week. They've changed the article online, but they can't do the printed version until next week.
Were the dates wrong?
Six days instead of four. And they said the problem is we have to fix the jug handle.
No. Okay. And I also...
Somebody broke it when they were taking a sweep.
Wanted to point out this picture of the falls from the 1800s. I think this was right around the end of 1899 or something like that. This picture was taken that you see in here. And I have this picture, I have this photograph on the wall in my office. So when somebody says, "What's the city's vision for the Lamont Falls?", I can say, "Well..." I just sort of turn over there and then I report on the four virtues that the commission has identified. But to place a picture with it, I mean, it's just a grand site, and that's a little bit of what it used to look like. Before, as Nancy says, we put so much concrete in the river. I say "we" as a people, not a city. But there's just so much information in here, I can't... Every time this issue comes out, I'm more wowed than the time before because the staff finds that the people that work on this, it's a real collective effort. A lot of them are actually, some of them are volunteers. They don't, they're not even employees. But the information that's in there is just terrific, and I am just so thankful. I want to just appreciate, say a word of appreciation for the folks that worked on that. And then I'll be in the amateur division Thursday night in the Irish Stew Cook-Off. It's boring in the chamber. So come try my stuff. And that's all we have tonight.
Presentation.
Pardon me? Oh, yeah. And David Knoll is kind enough to come and just brief you very quickly on the OC Maps program. As you know, we rolled out OC requests about eight months ago, and we're going to have an update on that toward the end of this month. We continue, as an organization, to try to strive every chance we can to use technology to improve our service delivery and become more efficient. And so David's here tonight to give us a short update on OC Maps.
Hi, thank you for being available for a few minutes at least. I'm planning about 10 minutes to just show you a little update on what we've been doing mapping-wise. We've been busy. To give you a little history on the mapping at Oregon City, in 2001 or '02, we rolled out an internal mapping application so that staff could query data, make maps, everything that you're familiar with now. In about 2006, we enabled that on the website so that the public could do much the same thing, in some cases, do more. In the staff sense, we like to provide staff with a few more bells and whistles than the public. And so that's the current state of things now. We have a web version and an internal version. And we've been recently working on integrating those two into one product. So I'm going to give you a little background on OC Map, which was our, is our internal tool. It serves the staff here at the city, provides data layers, a lot of reporting tools. Many are required in the planning process. Zoning reports, property reports, address reports. Provides a tool for staff to create mailing labels. We can view documents such as as-built, customize screens for utility and Public Works, data editing, and provide staff with a few, a little bit more data than we provide to the public in some cases, specifically ownership information, which isn't private, but it's a little more sensitive to get a hold of. If you just want to download the ownership layer of Oregon City, you can't do it from the website. Some of our data layers include land use, Title 13, environment, you know, the flood layers, development, build-out, et cetera. Aerial photos, we do updates once a year. And we have just uploaded the 2011 July photos. Terrain, slope, and natural features. We integrate OC Map with permits and databases that other departments use, like Eden and Finance at the city. And OC Map is basically a dying technology, so we've been looking for a solution for that. In contrast or complementary to that is our public web version, OC Web Maps, that serves the staff and public. It does much the same thing. It's pretty fast and clean, and you can do some reporting through that. It has some extra drawing and reporting features. And once again, it is slightly dying technology. So why are we changing? This technology is, needs to be updated. Our new platform supports instant updates, so we can make GIS edits in the field over the phone from the Public Works guys in the field or gals in the field. And that can be reflected immediately. It's a better technical framework for the future. A richer interface, which I'll show you in the demo. It's easier programming for staff to make. And there's a lot of potential for making mini-applications or targeted... You know, you're familiar with some of these, you know, Who's Your Garbage Hall or some of these targeted applications. It also will support mobile and iPad technology so that we can start rolling some of these applications out in ways that we haven't before. And it's browser-based, so that we're no longer tasked with doing client installs on all the machines. It frees us up for licensing, and we can use it anywhere. So these are, I just have three screenshots, and then I'll show you the demo of the new tool. This is our internal tool that many of you have used, OC Map. And it has a set of data layers and a map screen, among other things. This is our current OC Web Maps, creatively named, which is our external tool. And it has many of the same functions. There's other data layers, it's formatted a little bit differently. And then here's a screenshot of our new OC Web Maps. We decided, sort of like the iPad 2, not to rename it the 3 or the new. It's just going to be OC Web Maps, we're not going to start tacking on names. So this is OC Web Maps that will be rolled out probably April 1st.
Is the next version going to be newer and then newest?
Newer, newest, newest 2, newest final.
Newest one more time.
Newest one more time. So I'll go ahead and fire up the demo here. So when you open the application, you're basically zoomed to the city limits here. And I just have a few things that I want to guide you through as an introduction to the tool. This isn't a training, we'll be doing some of that with staff later. But both our old application and the new one will be available simultaneously for a bit. But along the top here, you have some navigation tab, and you have some features along the ribbon here. Find Features, where you can do a point identify of tax slots or do an identify with polygons. The Measure tab, you can do many of the same things, measure areas, measure distances. And it will actually label some of those features for you. Draw on the map, many of the same drawing tools that we've always had. The Make Maps and Reports, I'll show you it a little more detail, but the last one here is View Other Data, and I'll show you that. So along the ribbon here, we have a few map layers, and this is this frame here. And you can scroll down and see many of the operational layers and then some of the base layers. So as you expand these, if you would like to turn on the aerial photos, it's as quick and easy as that. If you'd like to turn on the 2010 layers, it's as quick and easy as that. And you can actually turn these layers transparent. And it's pretty quick to refresh. If you wanted to, you could turn the contours on. And anybody who's used to some of our old tools, that's much faster than we're used to. Real happy about that. But again, you can turn any of these layers transparent. So if you're zoomed in to tax slots, I'll turn the contours and the aerial photos off for now. On the Find Features, there's a number of ways that you can find some information about a tax slot. Point Identify, simply select a tax slot, click on it. Up comes a street view, attribute structure, the site is address. We have some combined mailing labels, reporting features. If you're not zoomed to that one, if you've done a query, you can zoom to it or pan. Create a report from this selected tax slot. And we have a number of reports that are available, either mailing labels. I won't do that for just one or two selected. But I will do a tax slot report for this. And this will look familiar to many of you who've seen the tax slot report.
This is the public version that's involved?
We are initially rolling out the internal version because we have some tools that we want the staff to be able to use. And after that's done, we'll roll out the public version, which will have many of the same tools.
Okay, will it have this tax slot report? I remember seeing this before, then I can't find it ever again. Did it go away?
No, it hasn't gone away. We have the tax slot report and the property report, the address report are all still available.
They're still there. I just can't find them, okay.
Be happy to show you if you want. Or you can use the new tool. But this has tax line information, overlay information that planning might want to have. So that's just one way that you can run a report. You can also select a series of polygons, or a series of tax slots using a polygon. You can view the results of all of those and export that to a report or an Excel file, common to limited. Change the look and feel of this. You can put the table at the bottom and export from there. When you hover over one of the tax slots, it'll show the highlighted version. On this tab also with Find Features, we have some of our customized reports. And again, these are still tools, these are tools that we already have in existence, and they're just slightly modified for this interface, but we've had to recreate them. The Find Tax Slot tab will allow you to search either by a reference map, if you know that. You can find a specific tax slot, or do one of the queries by ownership name, address. You can even select all the tax slots in a subdivision or neighborhood association. In this case, I've just selected one tax slot. It finds it, and I can either pull up this information, as I did before, or close this and view the tax map upon which that tax slot resides. By the way, I do want to give due credit to Chris Dunlop, our GIS coordinator, who's done a fantastic job of programming this. He's really sharp with this. This is one of the first rollouts in the Portland area of this type of product. And he's done a great job, so he deserves a lot of credit. On the Measure tab, sorry, on the Find Features, there's a number of queries that we've built. The Find Subdivision, again, any number of ways you can select a full subdivision of information. I'm going to do Aiden's Glen. Let's go ahead and find that. And export all of those tax slots to a report, if you wish. This is one more way to find the as-built drawings that you saw earlier. If you know the as-built number or the as-built name, you can simply select it here. I've chosen to make the as-built layer visible. We have all of the as-built boundaries digitized in spatially. Almost all. Just selected every as-built number, 1010. And here it is, and you can view that as a multi-page PDF. The Mailing Labels. The Maps and Reports, there are a number of tools, one of which is the mailing labels. So this will provide you with a series of choices. Would you like to type in an address? Would you like to pick a tax slot from a list or do an attribute query? Or just simply draw a graphic on a map? In some cases, it will just be a tax slot. In some cases, you might want to create address labels based on project. And say your project is the length of this street. So I'm going to draw a line down this street. And that's the length of my project. And gives me the choice to buffer that graphic to... And gives me the choice to buffer that graphic to some extent that I might choose here. Tony, what's a popular buffer, 300 feet? Does that sound familiar? And again, you have another choice to either buffer the specific location of that graphic or the tax lots which it crosses. In this case, since I just drew a line down the middle of the street, I'll buffer just the graphic. And it will select those tax lots. Would I like to mail to the residents, the taxpayers, or both? I'll do that, and it will weed out the duplicates. And you view the mailing labels. I may have disabled my pop-up there. It's a really slick tool. The tax lots work great. May not have found any since I did the middle of the street. Select those tax slots, buffer those, again, to 300 feet. Mail to the residents this time. There they are, ready to save and mail. You can do this for an entire neighborhood association or subdivision, whatever your query might be. And there's a number of other features. I just wanted to give you a brief rundown of some of the functionality that we used to have, still do, but is now transferred to this new tool. One of the big pluses for this is this mini-app idea of where we can tailor-make a small application for a specific user or department. Chris got a request to do PCI codes for Public Works for street conditions, and that's going to be a pretty easy app to make for a specific application. It'll be small and not used by very many people, and that's perfect for him. Just one example. Any number of economic development and Public Works, specific applications can be developed. Oh, the eye candy at the very end. If you have, let's turn on our aerial photos here. Sorry, I got excited with mapping. You might have to slow me down. If you have a, you open, and you choose to view other data, you can also view this in Google Maps. You can either open this in a new tab, as it's doing now, or a new window if you have a dual monitor. And if you pan on the mapping screen here, it will also update the Google Map location. Here's the Google Map location. It's linked to the map here, so if you refresh that, it goes to that location. The timing of this launch, we're shooting for the beginning of April. It's basically ready to roll out now. We just want to go ahead and do some training videos and get staff ready for that. And then after the internal deployment, we'll go ahead and roll that out to the public shortly after April, and then start working on some individual applications for departments. And I guess I'll take any questions or comments that you have.
It's exciting.
Yes, we think so, too.
Were the maps down last night?
That is, you've identified, yes, they were.
Okay.
They're limping along. Web maps is limping along, and occasionally it needs a restart of some services. That's one of the reasons that we've gone to this development. So, yeah, we're finding more downtime with the current services. Sooner we get this out, the better.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's the conclusion of our reports.
Anything from the commission?
I have something. I wanted to ask Eric, you're working on your budget. Was there anything put in your budget for the Sustainable Cities program we talked about from the University of Oregon? And then I just wanted to report on, I took an accidental kayak tour on Friday down with, I didn't have an accident.
Oh, okay.
I just walked by to ask them how they were doing, and they said, "We're leaving. Come go with us." So I ended up on a kayak tour.
Is it being unemployed, right?
It is. It's really nice. But, gosh, what a great way to see the Clackamas and the Willamette, and I'd really encourage everybody to go down there. They're great to work with, but it was very, very nice.
Okay, well, with that, we'll close the study session and open nothing else.